After 8:30, so I'll call this select board meeting of April 4th, off-cycle select board meeting to order. And Mr. Town Administrator, I think you can, or Joe, whoever's taking the lead.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Joe, you're working on that PowerPoint, you want to call it up? There's two articles.
Yeah, if you want to, I'm just closing it, if you want to pull that, that up now.
There's two articles that we wanted to get clarification on this issue on the screen.
Sorry, do we know that Cindy and Paul are going to attend?
I do know that Cindy is not going to attend.
Oh, okay.
Paul.
Okay.
Paul was on his way.
I just saw him, okay.
Okay, so Article 12, at the last select board meeting, there was, there was the question on whether or not, or ask your time, it was actually to determine to insert number six, which, I'm sorry, number seven, which was going to allow us a borrowing up to $10 million. So, and then there is some questions from FinCom as far as, well, we still wouldn't have the authorization to pull from the stabilization fund to do this all quicker. So, a lot of emails and conversations that happened towards the end of last week, over the weekend, so forth, to bring us to today. So, just to, you know, articles.
You said there was a lot of email, Anthony, excuse me, Anthony. You said there was a lot of emails and communications, I didn't see them.
No, no, between staff, Paul, Joe, and Alicia, that were just cleaning up the articles.
Okay.
So, so number seven does what everybody thinks is appropriate, which would release the stabilization fund to use it, increase the borrowing from 10 million to 12 million. Pretty much, that's it, Joe or Avery, is that kind of correct right there? So, to summarize?
I think that's right.
Go ahead, Joe.
So, and we do have, let me just check the past, we do have Steve Vannuti with us. At the finance committee's meeting last, last week, they had questioned whether or not it should be the 12 million, and then they also felt that it should identify that we are utilizing the 5 million from, from stabilization. So, that's, that's what's reflected in what Anthony has on the screen and track changes, is having that, Avery may have proposed some slight changes, but I think those were just for legal form, not sort of changing any of the substance. So, we just look for town council to confirm or not.
Joe, Joe or Judy, can one of you let Mr. Wilson in, please?
Oh, is that Megan?
Uh, no, Gary.
I don't see, oh, is that his cell phone number?
Is it 724-781-742-724?
Yeah, 724-4262?
Yep.
Okay. Sorry, Gary, I just publicly announced your cell phone number.
I just gave him permission to talk, so he can use, I believe it is star nine or star six to mute and unmute himself.
Could I ask, I'm sorry, I must have missed this, why is the borrowing sum 12 instead of 10?
So, I'll, I'll explain, and Gary, if you want to jump in, or Steve, I think, Matthew, that was just concerned about if the price came in higher, that this would allow us the flexibility to, to complete the project without going to another town meeting.
So, I. Mr. Chair, can I, I'm sorry, can I give the finance committee's point of view?
Please do, Steve.
So, we met on Tuesday night, and there were kind of a lot of questions as to, number one, why an amount was even in the article to begin with. We were kind of caught off guard, why an amount actually showed up. It was kind of our consensus, and Gary, if you're on the phone, please correct me if I'm wrong here. It was kind of our consensus that we didn't have enough information, and that the project could actually be wait, could wait to be, have the authorization done in the fall town meeting, because of the timeline of the project. We didn't know the reasons why the selectmen were adding an amount there, and we felt that if an amount had to be there, was the 10 million enough? And that's why we brought up, maybe it should be 12 million to give us a little bit of cushion. But I think we still kind of, as a consensus, feel that an amount really shouldn't be in this article. And I happened to be in town hall on Friday for another meeting with Anthony, and he was actually meeting with the architects for the project. And based on what I heard at that meeting, I stuck around for it, based on what I heard for that meeting, they don't feel that we need to go to this town meeting with an amount just yet, and that the fall would be fine. And they were actually thinking that that would be the normal course of action, is to wait until the fall for an amount.
That's correct, Steve, so we went through the project timeline, we really wanted to get his schedule on whether or not he felt that we would, we would be ready before the special town meeting in October. And his answer was basically, no, they have to still do the documents and the bidding documents, and they feel like that having this language is, they're still not going to be ready. So, you know, with that, it's up to obviously the board, whether or not they want to strike seven and go with the original article, and then in this, in the fall, we would then go for the borrowing, whether we know the number for, the final number for, that's being proposed for the construction project.
I can probably say, I'm sorry, Paul, I can probably say that, given what the architect said on Friday to us, and if the FinCom were to sit down with the architects and hear that same message, we would probably not like an amount sitting in this, in this article, we would rather have it taken out. And just go with.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Please, Paul.
Okay, well, just to cover some ground, I mean, obviously, we, when we met on Monday night, we discussed the reasons why, one is that the prospective delays in seeking the authorization were pretty much limited down to resolving the site on the locus, and that, you know, we know what the, essentially what the building is going to look like, it's just on which part of the property it is, and that didn't seem to be any kind of a deal breaker. In the other was, the need to get the costs under control. But that also didn't seem, as long as we had a high-end ceiling on it, that we were comfortable in, in working toward, translation, that the estimates that we had upwards of $18 million total, bit of a shocker, hoping that we can get that down in any event, trying to get our consensus around a dollar figure, 15 or under, from the various sources, to fund it, those two things seem like, while there are variables there, they're largely, they can largely be presented as having some some affinity to them, and that, you know, we're going to be doing a project that isn't going to exceed $15 million total, and two, it's going to go on the property, either on the tennis court side, if it passes all the regimen with the testing, or it's on the other side, which we, you know, we've shown schematics for before. So, there's not any real reason to hold it up for those purposes. The, on the positive side, is that there's flexibility given to the treasurer by having the authorization sooner rather than later. And also, it gives us more more weight in trying to persuade the legislature to include any dollar amount toward this project in a line item, budget line item, which we're also actively pursuing, to try to bring down that 18 or 15 million dollar figure. So, it was almost a situation where there's no real reason not to include it at this point. And beyond that, I guess, you know, in a bit of a disadvantage, just being a board member here, we're seeing all this information for the first time today on this screen, when apparently, you know, a good deal of this was available at the end of last week. So, I apologize for not being ready to address these figures, we weren't, wasn't provided in our, you know, support documents for this. And, but I'm left with a question as to why, what would be the strength of a borrowing article if there's no dollar figure in it? Because I've heard it said here, now this pointing, that, well, we should get rid of the dollar figure. Well, what would be the authorization that's granted if there's no dollar figure in it?
Just the appropriation?
I, I think it's just the increase in the design funds that's mentioned previously.
Well, no, I guess my question is, did I hear correctly, you say if you'd be, the concerns would be toward the actual dollar, including a dollar figure for the authorization?
I think we would like to see number seven just totally taken out.
Okay, well, that's, that's different.
Mr. Mr. Chair, if I may.
Please.
Apologize for some of the connection problems, thank you, Steve, for being on the call. Yeah, I think, Steve, you kind of alluded to exactly, I think, the questions that the finance committee had, were the article itself, just knowing the costs are why we thought that it probably should be bumped up, so we don't have to come back to town meeting later on. That was, that was the concern of many of the members. But also, even that being said, without having a plan in hand, actually looking at the visual, getting the cost estimate, there was no way that the finance committee was going to be able to recommend the article with, without at least that. And that obviously makes a lot of sense. Not knowing exactly what the project looks like, not knowing anything about it besides the ask. So, we did talk about moving, replacing number seven with just the stabilization monies that you see here, that would bridge us until fall town meeting, when we could actually probably have very legitimate estimates, where we can then do the borrowing article. And the 5 million from stabilization could bridge us beyond, you know, the planning stage, once we got into the build stage, we'd have, be able to use that money at least to get us to fall town meeting. So, that was, that was the, the thought process behind it. But then you're actually committing, you know, I mean, we don't want to, I want definitely be transparent, anyone that voted for even that article would probably be, have to assume they're committing to a vote in the fall for the actual facility as a whole. So, that, that's kind of where this can see from, this was a long discussion on the finance committee, obviously, we probably spoke to this for about an hour. And definitely wanted to hear the select boards a little bit more, because we're actually having a meeting tomorrow night, just to talk more about it. And we will meet a few more times this month, once we get more information about this article, whether we get to vote on it now or at the end of the month, right before town meeting, that's what we'll, we'll do.
Just two points of clarity, I see your hand up, Matthew, I apologize, but just, I can't let it pass by, so we don't know what this is going to look like. Well, we do know what it's going to look like, both physically and in the numbers. And we know what it looks like physically, and that might have some site cost issues, if it's on the, the old library side of the property, then it's going to involve more work on the supporting, you know, slope side that it's on, and if it's on the tennis court side, it's still going to be essentially the same built, we've seen those those pictures and layout of the buildings. The other part, as far as the, the, we don't know, if we knew what it's going to look like financially, we do have estimates, but they're too high, we want to bring them down. But we do, we do know what it looks like, we know what the $18 million estimates are. So, I'd say we do know what it looks like, both physically and financially, we're just, you know, under a, you know, kind of a drive to bring those costs down.
Matthew, you had a comment?
As I understand it, the debate here is, you know, is the, is the value of having the flexibility for the treasurer, and the potential of starting the project a few months early? And it's, you know, and it's, it's the, the less expensive borrowing as a result of that, is that worth the uncertainty that finance is, is sort of stating on this borrowing article? You know, we don't know that the, the rates are going up, I think that was one of the main drivers on this, on this article from Mr. Sanders, who started, who proposed it.
The discussion was underway before Mr. Sanders weighed in.
Okay, fair enough, but, you know, I think that we, we did discuss, okay, that's fine. As, as it is, we, you know, we, we have the option of approving it or not in the fall. I, my guess is that the amount of money that it's going to cost us, if the rates do go up between, say, June and October, is not going to be significant. And so, you know, perhaps we should listen to finance and not authorize an amount, and continue, and then revisit this when we have a more baked plan for the senior center.
To the best of my knowledge, the only time we've proceeded with a project without any, and Paul, I appreciate the fact that you said, you know, we do have an idea, we have renderings and that kind of thing, but nothing specific to that site, we don't have all the information from that site. The only time that I'm aware of that we've approved a capital project or a build like this was whether or not to exceed number of $4 million of alumni. And that was a stretch, I mean, that was a, the finance wasn't very comfortable with that, there's a lot of deliberation around that, and that was, I actually, that was one of the reasons why our, our finances are in pretty good shape, is we've got some pretty talented people that make responsible decisions. I'm, I certainly go either way.
Can I just add one to the list, the sewer project last fall, $25 million in our, our, we have conceptual plans on that, and that's comparable.
Okay, the other thing is, the, as far as the, the information that we have in front of us here, that was in our packet on Friday, so I, there was no supporting information for it, as far as, you know, how we got to that number and that kind of thing, but.
Wasn't in mine, I, I got it by email, so I don't, I've been away from my home since Friday, so was that delivered as a?
No, I got an email. I got it, the packet that Joe sent out is what I got, and that's, I've got the red lines, just like I'm seeing in front of the screen right now.
Oh, that, yeah.
Yeah. But the, the, I mean, there's, there's four of us on here right now, in, you know, with, we've got a couple of members of the FinCom, and I think Alicia's on here, and town administration, what's, what's kind of the pleasure of the board, what do we, what? Matthew, I kind of concur that the, every dollar matters, but I do think that the debt's not going to be placed until probably close to the fall anyway. So.
So then why are we asking to borrow now? I mean, the, the whole point of this was, let's get ahead of this, these Fed rates. If we don't, if we're not going to borrow until after the fall meeting, there's no point in giving an amount now.
I, I do want to, if the, the hope is that we are going to get some money from the state, if this helps us, gives us a stronger position, skin in the game, whatever term you want to use, if this helps us in that regard, then that, that would be a reason for me to be in favor of putting a number in there, but.
That's an excellent point, I, I agree, I agree with that. If that, if that is a real possibility, then yes, that is a reason to do it.
So, Joe, do you have any thoughts or comments?
I think my, one of my concerns is that if we bring this to town meeting, and we don't have the consensus of the, of the finance committee, then we'll have trouble passing this, it only causes more problems at, at town meetings, so. I wouldn't have a problem with just dropping seven.
Mr. Chair, if, if I may, and I know, I think Steve wanted to chime in with, with something as well, but I, as a board, we, we absolutely would do all we, we could, we realize that's not something that we want to happen at town meeting. So, leaving this number in the article, the discussion was, hopefully between now and then, we would be able to, we would have more details. And, and I know, Paul, you spoke to renderings, but the finance committee as a whole, I mean, I'm a little bit more aware of some of it. But the finance committee hasn't been shown any, any plans about the new project. And I'm just expressing their concern as a board. Is it, is it 10, is it 12, we know that the costs are going up. I, Steve, I would like you to speak a little bit to the borrowing, and why, why, I think the initial thought of this article, where I was in full support of, I met with Mr. Glavy in the hallway, and I thought it, it made a lot of sense. And I, and I brought it to the finance committee, and I was kind of talked that back down from it, from a perspective of financing, due to when these, it can actually be bonded. And I'd like you to speak to that, Steve, just to get a little bit of an idea, so the board understands some of the thoughts of the finance committee.
Sure. I heard it mentioned a couple of times today, and I know George Sanders sent a letter around with kind of the same concerns, is that, you know, the Fed has already announced that they're going to increase interest rates throughout the year, and some big, pretty big jumps in, in the interest rates that we could see moving forward. But that doesn't help this project, I mean, it's, even if you have the authorization, Sean can't go out and borrow this money until the project actually starts, or just before the project starts. There are spending limitations that we have to do, so within a certain timeframe, we have to have spent X amount of dollars with different levels, like three months, six months, so on. So, he can't go out in, in July 1st and borrow this 10 million or 12 million dollars to take advantage of lower rates, because, and the architects on Friday kind of said this also, is, you know, we're probably looking at something that's starting like nine months after this, after this May town meeting, or up to 12 months. I mean, we may be talking about starting the project this time next year. So, there's no way that Sean can go out and borrow for something that's, you know, nine to 12 months away from, from actually happening. So, from a financial standpoint, putting number seven in here is not going to help us with the Fed increases. The other thing with, with adding the stabilization money, and Gary had mentioned this, just putting the stabilization dollars in, I don't even see a reason to have to do that, if the project's not started, or just roll it all into the fall town meeting. You go to this town meeting with, with what we get from the architect between now and that time, some better drawings, a, a little advanced cost estimate, you know, just a real estimate. We don't know what's going to happen over the next 12 months or so, nine months. You know, is, is the Fed increasing these interest rates really going to slow things down, so costs come down, or is just costs just going to keep spiraling up? So, an estimate that you get today probably needs to be refined over the next six months or so, as you can see what happens with costs moving forward in projects, if they start to fall off the wayside. So, I mean, I think that's another reason, just to pull number seven totally.
Just to make a comment about the, the stabilization, Steve, I don't think this, I think there's good reason for us to put money into stabilization, because we're, we're going to do something. And if we're able to put some money into stabilization now, that'll be less money we have to borrow later. I'd, I'd be in favor of.
This is, this is taking money out of stabilization, not putting money in.
All right, I'm sorry.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, please.
For the board, that meeting that we, Steve was referencing on late Friday afternoon, we are going to have an update by the architect for the select board on Monday, the 11th. That will really be able to, hopefully, put in focus project timeline, maybe a little bit more on a, on a preliminary price. So, if you wanted, if we just held off on seven and go with the original article, I believe we still could add that as a handout, and open the article, insert seven, if we got different information to, to the contrary, but I, I, I think seven, at this point, might be just premature based on their conversation. But whatever the pleasure of the board, you know, I think there's still could be an opportunity to address this for a town meeting. Tom, you can opine if I'm correct or incorrect on that.
No, that's, that's okay with me.
While, while Tom's in the conversation, this, this language here, Anthony, correct me if I'm wrong, minus the red line changes, is what the board voted to put on the warrant last Monday night, correct?
They added something, Paul, on, FinCom added, all we, all we had on settle was to have the, an authorization to borrow up to, not to exceed $10 million.
Okay, that was, that was, that was the voted language as of last Monday, so it would take a vote to change that, correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay. What, what is the pleasure, well, actually, going down that stabilization road, we've, what is it that we have designated to be put aside for the senior center with this warrant?
5 million, 3 million's already in the fund, and 2 million will be deposited.
With this town meeting?
Yes.
Thank you, okay. Good. So, that will not be affected. What is the pleasure of the board, do we want to entertain a motion to remove seven from the warrant, or further deliberation to defend keeping it? Thoughts? Is there, is there?
I would be in favor of, just if you're asking for thoughts, I would defer to the proposed amendments here in red line, and it as a change, but other than that, I would support the line between originally adopted, either one of those options, fine with me.
Okay, Paul, do you, is it your opinion that this will position us better with the state for potential funding?
Potentially, that's not a guarantee, but yeah, and I've had that conversation with, well, fairly recently, Senator Eldridge, about, yeah, obviously, if, if you, if the town is, it showed that they are, that we're adopting, you know, the, has shown a voted willingness to support the overall cost of the project, then that increases your likelihood of getting funding, as opposed to just, you know, taking a flyer on it and say, hey, if you give us some money, we might do something.
An earmark, yeah. Okay. Matthew or Joe?
I, I concur with Mr. Glavy.
I'm fine.
All right, if that's, so the recommendation of FinCom is to hit the pause button on seven right now and remove it, but what we're, what we're proposing then is to take the red lines and amend our initial vote for this article?
I'd make that the form of a motion, if you're looking for one, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Second.
All right, move the seconded, it is a Zoom meeting, so I'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Nordhaus?
Matthew Nordhaus is yes.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
And Mr. Decosse is in favor as well. Okay, let's move the next one, please.
Can I just jump in real quick?
Please.
Can we make, and I'm sorry, I didn't say it sooner, can we make your motion subject to just a little tweaking from legal to make it read more clearly?
That, that was assumed in my motion, Tom.
Subject to approval of town council.
Thank you.
Good, thanks, Tom. Okay, so we have Article 22, right, is that the next up? Anthony, Joe?
Yep. Yes, so.
Anthony, could you reshare, I'm sorry, I stopped it so that we can pick up the vote.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, while I'm doing that, if, if maybe Alicia, you want to just give a history, just to kind of why we're here with this article?
With the cell towers?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, so, do you want? Yeah, so DOR in December, they have made a statewide initiative to eliminate the cell tower agreements that they found across the state. They found many communities are creating special revenue funds, which are not legal because cell tower funds don't fall under any legal statute. Therefore, in order to put them in a special revenue fund, we need a special legislation, which we did not have, we did not pass. So they told me they wanted me to close it to the general fund. Later, we met with Water, we met with Nick and Corey, and they provided documentation saying some of those, those cell towers are maintained by the enterprise and were purchased with enterprise funds. And therefore, they, they should be put back to the Water Enterprise Fund and not close to the general fund. And then our legal reached out to DOR and got an opinion from DOR that, yes, that could happen if they purchased it, they retained it, that those funds can go to their enterprise. So the determination was Oak Hill will stay and get close to the general fund, go to the town, and then at special town meeting, we'll open an Oak Hill stabilization fund, put money into it. And the other funds will get closed to the enterprise fund.
I just make one correction, Alicia.
Absolutely.
So I, so I would say DOR did not tell us that they can go to the Water Department Enterprise Fund. They told us that they must go to the Water Department Enterprise Fund on the, on the ones that are on Water Department property.
And whoever's driving the bus, could you please allow in Nick, Corey, anyone from the Water Department that's on the call?
I think Ivan was on there too.
Okay.
They're not there anymore. I did have Nick in, but the rest are not there.
Okay. Thank you. Alicia, thanks for the summary. So, I mean, if that's, if that's the opinion that you guys have brought forward and you've, you've gone to legal, and I mean, it's, it sounds like it's pretty much, in my opinion, a rubber stamp, and let's make sure that we're doing what, what works for to not be in the spotlight of DOR, and let's work towards the original intent of why these were set up. And I think keeping the water with the water makes sense. And Tom, if you're saying it's must instead of can, then it's.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, honestly, I, I think we had a nice run with the way we were doing it. And DOR has now decided that they didn't like the way we were doing it, and we have to change. And it's my, we do have to change. We can't go against DOR. They are a superior authority to us. So they're saying, yeah, these funds, you know, if it's, if it's on, if it's on Water Department land and there, and it was either purchased with or is being maintained with Water Department funds, it needs to go into there. It becomes part of their enterprise. And they're not authorized to spend it on open space, for instance.
Okay, but if we, if we enter into some sort of an agreement with them, then so be it. But, but as far as the accounting, this is what has to happen.
Right. So, and so there's kind of originally, there was three purposes. There was purchase of open space, which we can do through Oak Hill. There was the Clean Lakes stuff, which the Water Department can still do because that's a legitimate Water Department use. And then the other one was just to maintain, it was to go to Water Department for Water Department purposes, so that's happening. Anyways.
Through the chair, we're eliminating the special legislation, right? The special legislation part of the article? Okay.
Okay. Does anybody wish to see that on the screen or will be, before we've gotten? We good? Select board members?
Does the board need that backup?
I don't need that up, but just, Mr. Chair, I just ask a question. Since this does obviously impact the Water Commissioners, I know that some of those folks were on the pod, but they jumped off for whatever reason. I just want to confirm that they are on board with all this. I know there's been some discussion, but is this enjoying their support as well as approach? Or is there any dissenting opinion on this?
We've worked a lot with, with them, Paul, and, you know, I think that they're, they're okay with the way that this is going now. So like Chuck said, or Tom, the money will be rolled back into the enterprise fund. They'll continue to support the Clean Lakes. Conscom will still be able to get the money that they enjoy, have enjoyed over the past years through this Oak Hill cell tower. So, yes, I, this is something that's really been vetted by, by the Water Department, Nick and as well as Artson.
Just to add on to what Anthony said, Anthony also had us add a line into the budget so that Conscom could spend in '23 some of that money, so they wouldn't have to wait till we put the stabilization money in and then pull some stabilization money out. They're already in the budget.
Is, is the amount available to Conscom going down?
It's at 12.8. They wanted 13.1, so it's a $300 difference, and they said that's immaterial, so they were happy to have the 12.8 available.
Okay.
Okay. It looks like the, maybe we should have taken up the Water Commissioners issue first. They, they had to, they had to jump for their other jobs. So I believe they were just looking to take a vote to support this. But if we wanted to condition this, Paul, on their approval, or I, you know, I'm open.
Let me do, as long as we're on record, that that's the understanding we have going into it, that they, that they are in support of it. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
All right, entertain a motion then.
We have a written motion, Anthony, or just?
Yeah, it's in the packet.
Yeah.
I don't have that in front of me.
Need it, Matthew?
I think I have it here, but, oh, here we go. I move that.
Oops, sorry.
That's all right.
Now we go find.
All the bouncing ball.
It's 12.
22.
12 and 22.
So just 22 now?
Yeah, because you already took the motion on 12.
Okay. I move that the select board vote to recommend approval of amended Article 22 for the 2022 annual town meeting report.
Second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Nordhaus, second by Mr. Glavy, I believe. Roll call vote, Mr. Nordhaus?
Yes.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Mr. Knox? Chuck DeCoste is aye, so thank you very much. Order of Articles?
It, this is a pretty straightforward town meeting unless the board has a preference in, in, in any one article appearing later or earlier. You know, we're still kind of working through finalizing some of these articles, so if, we'd ask that you just leave it up to administration to do it unless you have a preference on, on any particular order now.
Do any of the members have any preference?
My only preferences would be this, that we, to the extent possible, follow tradition, group like articles together, and if one article is more or less predicated on another, have the one that has to go first, go first. But I'm not a big fan of moving one up to the front of the line because it's, you know, popular. I just, I'm in favor of just letting it play as well.
And Paul, that's exactly what we want to do is group the, just what you said is perfect. So that, that's all we want to do, and it just might need moving a couple of articles that, you know, revolving funds, revolving funds. So it kind of flows to your point. Yeah, that's all we're doing.
And the, the motion actually includes with advice of town council, so I think Tom has a pretty good understanding of our traditional format as well. So unless somebody from this, from any, any of you wish to be part of that?
If you wish to be informed, as soon as we know what it looks like it's going to be, share it, please.
Okay. Anthony, want to bring the motion up? Any other deliberation from the board members?
Nope.
Nope. I move that the select board vote to authorize a town administrator with assistance from town council to set the article order for the annual town meeting warrant.
Joe beat me on that one.
All right, duly noted. Motion was made by Mr. Nordhaus, second by Mr. Knox. Roll call vote, Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
And Mr. DeCoste is aye, okay. Do we have anything further to deliberate or discuss, or can we entertain a motion to adjourn?
Do we need to close the warrant?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you, Matthew.
Can you put that motion up, Anthony? Or is it just I move that this left board vote to close the warrant for the 2022 annual town meeting?
Perfect.
I got a second?
Second.
All right, motion made, Mr. Nordhaus, second by Mr. Glavy to close the warrant. Mr. Knox? Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
And I'm in favor as well, so thank you very much. Now we can entertain a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
All right, motion made, Mr. Nordhaus, second by Mr. Knox. Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Those are in favor. Okay, thank you all very much for meeting this morning. Appreciate it. Have a great day.